Off time. March. Eight, ten. March. There, there. Back, 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 back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Free! March!
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America-
And to the Republic-
-for which it stands- -one nation, under God- indivisible- with liberty and justice for all.
Hold up. March. And, back. Off time. March. Hold. March.
At this time, we will have Father Chris Brophy come with the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you generously bestow your gifts in abundance. We are most grateful for all that you continue to do for us and for the many favors that you grant each day. As we stand before you in this new council chamber, we ask that you be with us and give us your gift of enlightenment. May all actions and decisions made here begin with your inspiration and wisdom. God of wisdom and justice, through you all authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted and judgments are decreed. Guide and support our mayor, members of the city council, the city manager and our city staff. Give them the strength to know your will so that all decisions may be pleasing to you. May their work be conducted with righteousness, that they may always promote what is for the good and welfare of the citizens of Joliet. We likewise commend to your care all the residents of our city, that during this holy season they may be blessed and sanctified. Together may we work for the betterment of our community and enjoy the blessings promised to those who remain ever faithful to you. For we pray to you and we honor you, our one Lord and God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we could ask all of the council members and the mayor to come forward and do the official ribbon cutting, and then we'll acknowledge guests who were present. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and guests, we have honored guests here this evening, I think some of whom may be a little surprised about the appearance of the council chambers. Gone are the orange chairs and a few of the other amenities that we used to have in this room. But before we ask Ben Benson to explain who helped us get to this point, perhaps it'd be appropriate to introduce the honored guests.
Sure. I have former mayor Connors, judge, mayor. Councilwoman Rosalie DeAndrea. Councilman Tim Brophy. And Councilman Ken Pritz. That's all I noticed, did I miss anybody?
Your Honor.
Okay.
Councilman Chutina called me just before the meeting, something unexpected, he was fully intended on being here, but something unexpectedly came up and he sends regrets he can't be here, but congratulates and sends his best wishes.
Thank you, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilman Warren Doris, he called me today, and he's in Orlando, Florida, and he said he wished he could be here, I don't believe him, but he also offered his best wishes as well.
Tom, you think maybe we can get a picture of those?
Yes, we'd like to invite-
Have them come up and we can get a picture in front of the podium?
Yes. Mayor Connor-
Once he's come up, Mayor Connor and Rosalie-
Councilwoman DeAndrea-
And Tim and Mr. Pritz.
Councilman Brophy and Councilman Pritz. Perhaps have you, and maybe if we could have the mayor in the council chamber and then we'll have the guests in front of them.
Right.
By the way, Mayor, I've been informed, I'm the only ex-mayor. They'll die off pretty quick, so.
What's your secret?
Enjoy yourself.
Thank you very much. And one other tradition that we didn't get a chance to follow this evening because the blue ribbon was waiting to be cut, but we usually have the pastor who gives the invocation come and greet the council. I don't want to shortchange Father Chris, so if you'd like to come up and greet the mayor and council, it's a tradition we don't want to let go.
You didn't want to jump over the ribbon.
You could have made it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we start the meeting, I'd like to ask Ben Benson to come forward, bring the portable podium with the wireless microphone forward, and if Ben could just give us a very short presentation as to who helped us renovate the council chambers and some of the details that went into the process. Ben?
Thank you, Tom. Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to first start by thanking the PEG process, you know, the public education and government process allowing us to get funding from AT&amp;T and Comcast subscribers. And the GSA, the government helping us with the capital contribution and rent for a 10-year term certainly helps provide the funding for this room. And I just wanted to make sure, there's a lot of suppliers and subcontractors that were involved in this project, our Bertie and Rich and Tom Gravowski, Brett Mitchell and Caleb Yanko from Bouchard Mitchell and Associates, our architects, and even our hometown suppliers like Ben Comar from Home Control Works, the many hours of volunteers from JCTV and Jeff Proh helped consulting with them, and even especially our building engineers who I don't think this project would have got here on time without Rich Garcia, Donnie Kirchner and Brent Frazier. So, and certainly it all started with the CTIS committee and the members, Chairwoman, Councilwoman Susie Barber and Councilwoman Jan Quillman and Councilman Larry Hug with their help and guidance, we were able to really put this project together, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And it really, really did turn out nice, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I may mention, Ben mentioned about the GSA or the Government Services Administration, it's the federal arm of, it's the arm of the federal government that manages the real estate for governmental agencies. I know that most people who may be watching on TV can't see the west end of the council chambers, but it's actually a real-life courtroom that'll be occupied by the US bankruptcy judge who comes to Joliet on, every Friday morning to preside over bankruptcy proceedings. We were asked if we could help out because the court was being asked to make room for some new judges that'll occupy the Will County Courthouse, and rather than losing the opportunity to have the bankruptcy court here in Joliet, we decided to try to accommodate them, and I think people will be pleasantly surprised that we have a real-life courtroom here that'll get a lot of use. The other thing about this room, it's multifunctional, the chairs are not fixed, they can be moved around. I know we have some meetings here this week already where various sizes of groups will be coming in, and we also have a room divider that will allow us to divide the room into two, so if we have two meetings going on at the same time, we can do so without interrupting each other. So, we think it's a great addition, and certainly, you know, we found a way to pay for it without having to dip into general operating funds, and we're very pleased by that. So, we thank you for the opportunity to work with you. I know Ben mentioned the vendors, the construction manager Bertie Solutions and Tom Gravowski did a great job of keeping us on track. We have a few punch list items that we're going to keep working on, but guarantee that the project turned out the way that the mayor and council wanted it, and it also turned out under budget, so we're pleased by that.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add as well, I was involved with this project from day one, and it's a good thing that Ben and I aren't married, because we'd probably divorce right now. Because we worked day-to-day, and it was a labor of love, and again, all the vendors that were mentioned, I can't imagine what a better company, Bertie and Gravowski's and, you know, Busan Associates and Garcia, Kirchner, our own people, Frazier, I have to mention them again because they, we all worked together to bring this project together, and I can't tell you what a wonderful group of people it was to work with, and without them, we couldn't have done this beautiful, beautiful place that we have now. We're finally in the 21st century, so I'd like to thank them all again from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Is there a motion at the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on November 19th and the regular meeting held on November 20th, 2012? Stand approved as recorded.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Krista?
Motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, council committee reports. Public Service Committee?
Your Honor, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Barber, Councilman Fisher and myself met down in the planning conference room at 7:15 this morning to review a short agenda of contracts, change orders, pay estimates and final payments, found them all to be in order and recommend their approval this evening.
Okay. Do you want to move up the proclamation?
There is a request to move up the proclamation for the University of St. Francis Men's Cross-Country Team National Champions. Head coach Jeff Barker is here, as well as team members, to accept the proclamation.
Why don't all of yous come up here?
I'd like to call Athletic Director Laqueta up and Coach Barker and your team.
Well, it's my- It's my honor to read the proclamation tonight to the University of St. Francis Men's Cross-Country Team, which recently brought recognition to the city of Joliet by winning the National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics, NAIA, Men's Cross Country National Championship on November 17, 2012. Whereas the success of the Saints' Men's Cross Country Team is due to the great effort put forth by the runners who committed themselves to producing their best for the University of St. Francis, and also due to their dedication of head coach Jeff Barker, along with assistant coaches Bonnie Miller, Steve Lawrence and Jeff Chiapello, and athletic trainers Art Campos, Osvaldo Lopez and Luis Hidalgo. Whereas the University of St. Francis Men's Cross Country Team is comprised of 29 outstanding student athletes, namely Jacob Anderson, Daniel Barrett, Christian Bosruck, Michael Blazek, Brandon Carson, Isaiah Dunn, Jake Ferris, Skylar Fitch, Kevin Hanlon, Kevin Harden, Peter Hernandez, Julian Hoshel, Trevor Howard, Brandon Ivans, William Klebenau, Justin Krollick, Daniel Laskowski, Thayer Lowe, Julius Mendez, Colin Nielsen, John Nendorf, Pat Peacock, Christian Pendleton, Dylan Reyes, Corey Rios, Phil Rizzo, Arthur Stringham, Michael Top and Stephen Wilder. The University of St. Francis senior Phil Rizzo and junior Michael Blazek and freshman Brandon Carson were all named NAIA Men's Cross Country All-Americans at the National Championship Meet, and the University of St. Francis head coach Jeff Barker was voted upon as the NAIA Men's Cross Country National Coach of the Year. This is the fifth appearance for the University of St. Francis Men's Cross Country Program at the NAIA National Championship Meet, including the third in the last three years and the program's first-ever national championship. Now therefore, I, Thomas Gerani, mayor of the city of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby recognize the accomplishments of the University of St. Francis Men's Cross Country Team and congratulate them on winning the 2012 NAIA Men's Cross Country National Championship. The city council and I sincerely wish each student athlete the very best in their athletic, academic and lifetime endeavors. Signed, Mayor Thomas Gerani. Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you again for having us tonight. It's always good to be spoiled and honored, and last night we had dinner with the president of the university, had some good steak and things like that, and these guys, they've been on cloud nine ever since they've won. Little history of what happened at least this season, I was hired in August, so they got a new coach at last minute. They came in ranked ninth in the country and slowly crept up throughout the whole year, and in our association, similar to NCAA and cross-country, a lot of times you see foreign athletes like Kenyans and Europeans and things like that. Well, we have a special group of blue-collar Midwest kids that got it done, and besides that, they're also great students. We have a couple of guys up here like Phil Rizzo from Ever, he went to Evergreen High School, he's getting ready to go to law school, we have a couple of guys that are pre-med majors, so they're outstanding people and citizens, and we're very happy to represent the city of Joliet, along with the University of St. Francis, so again, thank you for having us tonight.
Dave wants you to spread out for a picture. Mr. Laqueta. Thanks, boys. Thanks, guys.
Next is agenda items and reports. Council memo 527-12, award of certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It is recommended mayor and council receive the award of certificate. Council memo 528-12, position vacancies. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to fill one maintenance worker position in the roadways division, one automotive mechanic position and subsequent vacancies in the motor maintenance division, and seven part-time crossing guards in the police department. Council memo 529-12, renewal of group health, dental, vision and life insurance programs. It is recommended the city manager renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois PPO Health Insurance Plan and the Dearborn National Life Insurance Program for 2013. Council memo 530-12, request for approval of a letter of intent with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the design and installation of a sound barrier along I-55. It is recommended the letter of intent with IDOT for design and construction be approved.
Motion?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Any questions? I just want to congratulate Ken and his staff, 13 years, great job, well-deserved. You talk about transparency, good job, Ken, good job. Sure. Krista?
It's been motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, public hearings. Council memo 531-12, annexation of 21 acres located at 1320 East Cass Street, Mount Olivet Cemetery. A resolution approving an annexation agreement for 1320 East Cass Street, an ordinance approving an annexation of 1320 East Cass Street, and ordinance approving the classification of 1320 East Cass Street. It is recommended said resolution and ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Excuse me, Krista?
It's been motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, under ordinances and resolutions. Council memo 532-12, an ordinance approving the 2013 annual budget for the city of Joliet, Joliet Public Library and the Foreign Fire Insurance Board. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
It's been motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug?
Well, I voiced my concerns yesterday, so I would just ask the mayor, if we could move forward to what city manager Tom Thanos had suggested that we, whether it's the finance committee or what committee you might choose, or forming a new committee to lay out like a five-year plan of priorities and things that we need to bring back or increase, things that we need to reduce, and with that suggestion, I say aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
I would have to agree with Councilman Hug, we need to set our priorities, especially with city services for our people that pay taxes and expect services, not that they're not getting them now, but over time, we need to replace what we have, and so with that being said, it's a balanced budget, and I will vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Your Honor, I, this is a good budget, and, you know, this budget went much better than the last several, and that was by no means no accident. It took a lot of hard work. I commend city manager Tom Thanos, director of management and budget, Ken Mahalich, finance director Rachel Meyer, and their respective staffs for a lot of hard work in putting this budget together, make it in a very easy format so that the mayor, council and general public could take a look at it, understand it and digest it, and I just thank them again, and I vote aye.
Councilman Fisher?
I too would like to thank the administration, all the department, division heads, and all our city workers who are, who were short-staffed in every department in the city of Joliet, and we seem to do more with less, and everybody's pulled together the last few years, and to echo what Councilman Turk said, that it does take a lot of work to get a budget, a balanced budget like this done, and I vote aye.
Councilman Girl?
I want to thank all the staff as well, there certainly was a lot of effort put into this budget. I'd also maybe make a recommendation here that if we are to work on a five-year plan, which I think is a good idea, I would suggest that that be sent to the finance committee, so Mayor, that might be something that you might want to consider. But again, I want to thank all of our senior management staff, all of our department heads for the effort they put into this budget, and I vote aye.
Mayor Gerani?
I vote aye, I have a couple of comments. Last night, Councilman Hug and I had a discussion about new monies that was produced. I was going to save this till mayor comments, till after the meeting, but if Rachel would come up, I asked Rachel to do a readout of new monies that have been produced because of the position this council took last year, and the new monies that's going to be available for next year. And I'm going to ask Rachel to point out which is new monies and which are not new monies. I maintain that because of the position taken by the council last year, that we had around $6 million. I'm looking at this at 6.7, and 2013 is 8.8. Rachel, would you give an explanation, please?
Yes, so what you're looking at here in front of you is a summary of the revenues that we passed tax increases for as part of the last year's, as part of the 2012 budget process, the ambulance fees, and what I'm showing here is that between ambulance fees, the electricity tax, telecommunications tax, the natural gas tax, the natural gas tax for the third parties, and then the home rule sales tax, that in 2011, we collected $25.6 million for those selected taxes. In 2012, we are estimating that we're going to collect $32.3 million, which is a total of $6.7 million of new revenues as a result of those tax increases, and through November, we've actually collected $4.2 million of new dollars, and then in 2013, the difference, the additional new money will be another 8.8 million.
It's all new money.
It is all new money.
Thank you.
Krista?
Motion carried. Next, under resolutions. Council memo 533-12, a supplemental resolution appropriating funds for the 2012 pavement marking program. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
It's been motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, bids and contracts. Under award of contracts, council memo 536-12, award a contract for the HVAC maintenance 2013-2015. Council memo 537-12, award a contract for data storage system replacement. Council memo 538-12, award a contract for data network relocation service from Elgin Water Tower to Parkwood Water Tower. Council memo 539-12, award a contract for a managed print services program. Council memo 540-12, award a contract for the demolition of 233 Collin Street under the neighborhood stabilization program. It is recommended council memos 536 through 540-12 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
It's been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Quillman?
I apologize, my iPad is, I do have a question about the HVAC system. I know our engineer estimate and the low bid was almost $100,000, and that low bid, do we know anything about that company?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. Meg McKeveli, our purchasing administrator, did check references, talked to other municipalities in which the company works, and received glowing recommendations from them, so we're confident that they're capable of doing the job.
And there won't be any change orders, they understand the complexity of the-
Yes, they do. Obviously, there's unforeseeable things that could come up, but-
Meg McKeveli, our purchasing administrator, did check references, talked to other municipalities in which the company works, and received glowing recommendations from them. So we're confident that they're capable of doing the job.
And there won't be any change orders, they understand the complexity of the?
Yes, they do. Obviously, there are unforeseeable things that could come up, but based on what, the way the contract is structured, we're confident this will get us through the year. I know it's a change from Hayes. Hayes was a very good contractor, but we went through a competitive bid process, and based on the competitive nature of this, we are saving considerable amount over other bids. So we're confident this company will do a great job.
Okay. I'll vote aye. Thank you.
Councilman Turk?
You know, this morning, at the Public Service Committee, we did discuss this with Meg, and as the city manager said, there was nothing but good comments about the contractor. And I think that if there, I think Meg said if there was a problem, that there isn't, we could, we could get out of the contract after one year into it, but every source she checked at was good recommendations. I vote aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo 541-12, Approved Change Order Number One and Payment Request Number Three and Final for the 2012 Pavement Marking Program. Council memo 543-12, Approved Change Order Number Four and Payment Estimate Number Four and Final for the East half Bridge Road roadway project. Council memo 544-12, Approved Change Order Number One for the Information Technology Hardware Support Agreement. It is recommended council memos 541 through 544-12 be approved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
It's been motion and seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Licenses and Permit Applications, Council memo 545-12 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Next is mayor and council comments.
Councilman Morris, start right here.
Well, I don't have much, but just to congratulate, as we've heard earlier, the team, Ben Benson and the committee, and all the contractors on the job well done with remodeling the council chambers. Again, I think it's a wonderful job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hug?
Oderkirk.
Oderkirk, I mean.
Thank you.[1336.54][1336.54](Laughter). First, I'd like to thank the former city officials and council persons who came tonight. Thank you, it's good to see you, and thank you for your service. Second, I'd like to thank city staff for all the work they did with the Christmas parade. It was tough conditions, which is hard to believe the last couple of days, but it was cold at Thanksgiving time, but it was a wonderful time, and they worked hard, and it went off really well, and thank them for that. And then finally, I also agree with Councilman Hug's comments about a five-year plan, I think it's a great idea. Obviously, we know raising taxes, we can raise more revenue, but I think we need to broaden our scope and look at how we're going to help Joliet get back in financial health. And I think there's other options, and they should be explored, so, but thank you.
Councilman?
I agree with all the previous comments, and I just like to say, I think it's really nice that we can see our city staff sitting up here in a very professional manner now so that we can see each one of them. And just a reminder that I believe Chief Traston, this Saturday, is Shop With The Cop at Walmart on 59, and we are needing volunteers, so if you want to come out and help a child get some nice things for Christmas, you can be at the Walmart on Route 59 at 7:30. Come on out and shop with the cop. Thanks.
Turk?
And to reiterate, but I too would like to thank Ben Benson and his, and the committee for the hard work they did on the renovation here in the council chambers. And also, I'd like to commend the individuals who worked on the parade, the Christmas parade. It, you know, it's nice to come down there and just get on the float and have fun, but it takes a lot of preparation over several days to pull it off, so I'd like to thank them. And I can't speak for Ben Benson, but he probably feels the same way that, you know, that you two aren't married is a good thing.[1451.01][1451.01](Laughter). Just teasing the jan.
You are, because you missed those orange chairs.
I do.
You said there was no color in here yesterday, so I wore red for you.
Thank you. That's it, Your Honor.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Okay.[1471.23][1471.23](Laughter). I'd like to congratulate Councilman Kirk on his Don Rickles impersonation there. And Ben, take no offense by this, but I need to clarify it for the record, I know Tom from Birdie Construction, and while I believe he's still a Chicago Bears fan and a real blue-collar Gobowski, it's actually Grotowski. Other than that, I do want to extend my condolences personally to a constituent of mine, somebody who lives in my district, and also, both of them are dear friends. Her name is Judy Gardner, there you go, and Bob Rice was her fiancee and significant other for many years, and he passed away last week from liver cancer. Before, he can get on the list for liver donation, so my heart goes out to Judy and Bob's family.
Thank you.
I have no comments, Mayor.
Just a question for our Birdie and sons, where are the orange naugahide bench seats? They're in the landfill, okay.
Yeah, we donate them to the county.
Am I on eBay?
I was thinking, Tom, maybe we should have put one of those bench seats at the museum with, just, just an idea, too late now, I guess, but.
Tony Cantos rejected them.
A lot of, a lot of memories, and a lot of, a lot of good people have sat in those seats over the years, and thank you to the entire committee and to the contractors who put this together. It looks fantastic, and that's all I have, Mayor.
As far as the seats, I come in here one afternoon looking maybe to get one for my basement. There wasn't one of them worthy of going in, any basement. Okay, they pretty were useless. Couple of things I have, at the last Joliet Area Historical Museum board meeting, the board made sure I thanked the city council for their confidence in extending our contract 10 years. I have a letter from Tina Capista Trebold that was sent. Trebold?
Trebold.
Trebold. It was sent to myself and Chief Traston. If I may, I would like to read it. "I would like to extend my sincerest appreciation to your police department, specifically Brad Bradisher, Pat Cardwell, Mike Riley, Ed Johnson. These men have gone and continue to go far beyond expectation, expectation of their jobs. Bert Bradisher has spent countless off-duty hours counseling family members and has significantly impacted our lives. He is a true role model with outstanding communication skills and an innate ability to be compassionate toward others. His efforts and kindness are greatly appreciated. Pat Cardwell is a remarkable leader. His steadfast diligence, strategic competence, and communication while executing a plan are outstanding, yet his ability to maintain compassion and empathy in the midst of all of it are what put him in the exceptional category of excellence. I am truly grateful for his commitment and efforts. I'd like to give a special thank to you, Mike Riley, and Ed Johnson, who have gone above and beyond in their dealings with my family. Their work ethic and resolve have been apparent since the moment they began working on our case. They are extraordinary team and are obviously experts in what they do. It is a blessing to have them in our corner." Thanks also to Chris Grambozy, Jeff Foranoff, and Officer Sturgill, among others, who have been instrumental in this facility, facilitating our case. I don't know what the case was, I don't know, but this is a great letter. Congratulations, chief. I had a meeting with Bob Pedersen, I see Bob's at all our meetings, and every once in a while, we get calls for skunk eradication, and I think Bob come up with a great idea. Nowadays, every, every neighborhood has a homeowners association, and Bob has suggested that the homeowners association buy these skunk traps because when they call the animal control, sometimes they can't get them, and they're expensive, and the homeowners association